And welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of Asouis Town Council. Monday, October the 17th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in council chambers. And we need to check, are there any late items? No? So we need to adopt the agenda as presented, please. Thank you, Counselor King, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor. Thank you. And first on our list today is a delegation. And this would be from Destination Asouis, a midterm review. And the presentation is by Kelly Glazer, the executive director. So, welcome, Kelly. We're happy to have you here and present this. So Brienne has that up on the screen. Are you, you can, I think you need to speak into the microphone, am I correct? Okay. Thank you very much.
Would you be driving this question?
Okay. How's that?
Is it?
It's on.
Brienne will make sure it's checked properly.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you very much, first of all, for allowing me to come and present and keep you up to date a little bit with what we've been doing at Destination Asouis. I have a written report that I have provided you previous. And before we get any further, I just want to point out two misunderstandings and/or/mistakes. And one of them is, is in our non-voting partner representatives. We have Jim King down as economic development specific, which I don't believe that's to be accurate. And then we have Spirit Ridge Owners Association vacant. And I apologize for that, Mike. We should have had your name in there.
That's okay.
So, wanted to get that out of the way right away. I have a PowerPoint presentation, and the reason I did that was I thought that we didn't really need to rehash our history and our purpose too, too much. So I'd like to skip through and just carry on confirming what we're doing at Destination Asouis in becoming, choosing, or helping to create Destination Asouis as the place that people choose to come and spend their time. Next, please. And what we do in terms of creating results for our stakeholders. And then we carry on to the board and how we structure ourselves in terms of the board determining our strategic plans and carrying through with feedback from our stakeholders and funding partners. And this is just a makeup of the board, and the percentages represent the portion of the makeup of the board. In other words, the hotel association makes up 19% of our board. We have the Ningkamee Resort Association making up 6%, and the RDOS making up 6%. Next, please. And then we have the Town of Asouis at 19 as well, and Spirit Ridge at 6, and then our elected directors at 19. And next, please. So we have, I have fixed my PowerPoint presentation to reflect what the mistakes were that I had pointed out in the earlier part of our presentation. Carrying on? So let's get right to it. We just did a quick overview of the funding model and what it looks like right now. And so with the MRDT that we have forecasted, plus our DMF fund that we received from the Spirit Ridge Owners Association, we are managing about $406,816, which represents 69% of the budget that we operate with. And next, please. Our regional tourism marketing agreement, which is an additional agreement, represents This agreement is the agreement we have with the town, the RDOS, and Ningkamee Resort. Carrying on? This is our economic development agreement at that rate and at that percentage of our budget. Next, please. Should have had a little remote. Sorry, yeah, no, there's a couple pages. It just goes through what economic development is about. But what I wanted to do is focus on what activities we've actually done. So this year, Destination Asouis and the Okanagan College partnered together and created a program for, it was targeted for eight or 12 students in the Olivera Asouis School District. And we received eight kids that went through the program. We've got lots of feedback. These programs were geared so that these kids would be ready to come out of high school and start working this summer. So we had essential employment skills, professionalism in the workplace, cashier training, front desk agent, room attendant, food safe, world host fundamentals, world host service across cultures, serving it right, B.C. wine server, and Wimis, and work safe B.C., as well as occupational first aid. What we found was not terribly surprising, but a little bit surprising in terms of disappointment. The program wasn't fully subscribed to. The timing, I think, was a challenge for some families. It was held in spring break. There was also, kids just don't have, they don't come to the table with the things they used to at that age. There was some reports back to us on different feedback that we got from some of the kids. And there was one that didn't actually know what a nickel was when we were teaching them how to do cashier training. So the other feedback we got, that it was nice to know, you know, what was expected of them in terms of getting ready for, you know, in terms of the essential employment skills. We had a meeting with the Okanagan College. This was a venture between just DO and the Okanagan College. As you're all aware, I joined the team in May, and this agreement was well in place in the year prior to my arrival. We talked about how we could do that better and how we could do it with a bit of a cost share going out there into the region, besides all of it falling on the hands of Destination Asouis. So we have a preliminary meeting scheduled to happen after about November the 10th, and that meeting will be between ourselves and the Okanagan College to talk about terms of reference. What's our purpose? What's our goal? What do we hope to accomplish? And then invite parties that would be appropriate to help us get to those goals and then move forward with a bit of a plan. We do still want to invest in the labor market in both Asouis and Olivera, and we need to think of Olivera as well because we do need that deep of a pool. We don't have enough kids here in our own community. And so we'll find ways to get Olivera engaged as well. As I said, I don't, I don't know, I know I have 10 minutes, and I know you're going to have lots of questions. So I want to sort of skim through some of that and then highlight a few things. We invested $29,558 in PR this year. That was also something that we had invested a significant amount of money in the previous years before. I had a look at it and rejigged things a little bit, and I'm still quite happy with our results. We had NAD equivalency come out of that of just over $85,000, which shows a return on our investment of over 288%. So I think that's a fairly good deal. We definitely need to continue on with our PR, but again, this is something that we're going to have a quick little look at and see where else we can do some economies of scale on that. But still, really good results. We've launched our economic development website, and we are in the process of populating it and ensuring that we've got the right RSS feeds, linkages, so that individuals who are looking on that website can get a sense of the business opportunities in the community. So we're building our inventory of opportunities. We are also, I'm working with Elan right now to try and get some information on the new housing developments that are going to be going on here so that people can see that there's new housing going on. Because unfortunately, we're kind of well-known for having a challenge with housing. So we wanted to spell that as soon as we can by getting people on that website. We'll also be building a marketing plan that will include our economic development website, as well as our regular website for online marketing. So we'll be channeling a little bit more energy in that direction. We're continuing to work with the snowbird campaign. Good problem to have, but we've been very, very, very successful. I've had some feedback from my hoteliers that tell me to stop spending money on this. So I'm trying to figure out a way how to do that where I'm accommodating, you know, one of our stakeholders, but not forgetting about the other smaller ones that still need that volume of people coming through. So we changed up our marketing program this year to spend less than half of what we spent last year and still getting out there and talking to people and engaging with people and hoping to encourage people to arrive earlier and stay later. Again, because I arrived in May and had to just sort of get my feet wet first, traditionally in marketing, you really, really need to be in your planning stages and putting things down on paper in August. And we were not able to do that. We started in late August with new people, and so I'm afraid what we'll have to do is look at how we approach that for the following year and just do some adjustments. And of course, I do need to embrace the marketing plan and budget that was presented and approved of, that I'm in the middle of working through. The South Okanagan Real Estate Board is confirming that we are still in full swing and in full growth and that we saw a 27% increase. Do I have the glasses on? Start reading numbers that might be wrong here. Our snowbirds are felt to visit two to three times before they actually purchase a home. In the short time we've been housing the visitor center in the DO office, all of our visitors have been snowbirds, and all of them are looking at real estate. So they're all planning, though. They're not going, yeah, I need something today, but they're all planning. Successful Oyster Festival. Our revenue before expenses was $32,286. So that was a 210% change over last year, and that seems like an alarming number, and I don't know why. So we have had some changes in the 2016 Oyster Festival in terms of how it was implemented and who implemented it. So you don't actually have the right or the reports that I would hope to have so that I can start answering the questions to some of this. I can guarantee you that that will change this time next year. We've hired Liz Dreyer, who is our project development, projects development person. Having an office of two, we pretty much do everything. We can have a title, but we do what we have to do. So Liz is going to be in charge of pulling together Oyster Festival. She'll also be in charge of helping us pull together a new festival we're introducing called Devour. And I'm actually going back east to experience this event as a guest and a panel speaker, and they have graciously covered my entire cost of going to this event. So we're going with pen and paper to ask questions and make observations. This event is held in a place called Wolfville, which is about a population of 5,000 and is an hour outside of Halifax. And there, been in existence for six years, Michael Howell, Chef Michael Howell, is the owner of the event. And they attract about 25,000 people over a period of five days. So our goal is to work with that and be realistic. We're not going to be able to do that, but we certainly were going to try. And the aspect that I'm excited about in bringing this festival here, which is a little bit different than so many of the great ones we already have, is it's a food, wine, and film festival. So introducing the amateur film element, digital media, and some previous studies I have done, I know that the Kootenays has a wealth of that type of individual, and I'm thinking that that's fairly close to draw those individuals over here. Plus, we want to work with the B.C. Film Commission, as well as the Okanagan Film Commission. And then there's a second layer there where we can start attracting some maybe more film business in terms of economic development. The only other thing I wanted to draw your attention to in this report, you've seen some stats on our social media campaign, but I'm quite pleased with our increase in our MRDT. July was approximately $20,000 over last year, and we're anticipating that August and September will be the same. So right now, year-to-date, we're sitting at a 20% increase over last year on our MRDT, which is fabulous news because we still have the same inventory. So that means our folks are making more money. So that's it for me. Is there anything else that I can answer questions on?
Yeah, thank you very much, Kelly. We really appreciate you coming in, and I know you've just been trying to gather all this information on the last five months, and you've had to deal with a lot of issues. So we certainly appreciate you pulling this together, and I'm sure there are lots of questions, and we'll start with Counselor Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Just a question regarding the moving to the 3%, which is possible now. I know in the initial ask, it didn't happen. Is there a timeframe? Can it happen anytime? It can?
Yes, it can. My plan is to get the ball rolling with our reapplication. Actually, I have a meeting this week with somebody that I'm going to have engaged to help us get going on it. I'm also attending a hotel association meeting this month. We'll start talking about it. But it was recommended to me that let's just get that 2% in for the next five years, and then, once the 2% is in, then I would like to go canvassing to see if we can get the 3%. So get 2% in, go to bed, because one doesn't operate in sync with the other until you've done it. Then, once you've done it, then they go together. So we can operate independently on that 1%.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Carol?
Thanks, Kelly. Great report. Just a couple of questions I have. In January, we have a decline of the 2% in 2016. Why would that be? I'm just, it's just a question because we had, you know, a lot more attendees in the community, so what's your explanation there? Don't know?
I'm going to guess at a couple of things, just based on my knowledge of the hotel industry. As far as I could understand, the hotels put a certain chunk of their inventory into the snowbirds, and there is some concern from some of the properties about the wear and tear. So there possibly could have been further inventory removed on the second year of the program. Mike, you might have a better?
I can probably answer. That's certainly one of the factors, is the resorts, it was sort of, when this was a grassroots effort to build a snowbird program over several years, you know, it was all-open inventory, let's fill what you could. Once DO started the marketing initiative, and there was a huge influx, the resorts responded by blocking off certain portions of their resorts for snowbirds so that they can attract new business in the other areas. Obviously, it's a lower average daily rate when you're talking about monthly stays. The other thing is, and we might see a slight decline in December, too, is December, January, we find a lot of the snowbirds are home with their families. So they take one of those months off and spend holidays with their families. So those are sort of two of the factors.
Uh huh. Yeah, understood May, but January was sort of, because I think this year, they blocked off, from what I've heard, one hotel's blocked off three floors instead of just two because their snowbird reception has been so great. So hopefully, our numbers will go up.
Yeah, I guess the challenge with snowbirds is that, you know, it's recognized that 30-day stay plus is hard on a room. And when you sit down and do the math, sometimes it's not worth it. And then, of course, the other part of it is, is that looking for that other piece of business and hoping that there's a higher yield from another source of business and the rate. It's the rate, so.
Yeah.
We need to push that rate up, and I think we're in a position to do so. I think pretty much everybody did this year. The supply and demand is very well-known to be short, and so I think the idea of people checking out and going home for Christmas or whatever, they may just stay checked in and go home for Christmas anyway.
Right.
But those are the sort of tweaks that we need to start making, is to make that, make this a thing that's still worthwhile to spend time and money on.
And from an economic development perspective, what do you think some of the, you know, just from your board, what are some of the areas that you're going to concentrate on to see the economic development part of Destination Asouis increase in profile?
What I would like to do, and I haven't had the opportunity to sit down with our act of committee yet, but moving forward, what I'd like to do is recognize that we have a fairly small budget, and I find that we have done a number of small things, sort of all over the place. I'd really like to see us all sit down and agree on one great big thing that makes a lot of sense, that allows us to apply for diversification funds and go in and do it. And bring a person in that's going to take ownership of that, apply for the funding, manage that, and then start execution of whatever it is that we decide. But pick one thing and do it well.
Focus on, I really agree, yeah.
Good, thanks, Kelly. Mr. Remanko?
Yeah, just looking at the stats for January, I would see kind of an opposite assessment or analysis of, I think one of the reasons that MRDT went down is because of the snowbirds. Because we don't draw MRDT from snowbirds. So the more rooms you put into the mill, the less rooms available for things that have been driving MRDT, which are hockey tournaments, volleyball tournaments. This is a community that really people like to come to for sporting events, and, you know, part of the attraction is the, kind of the quality of room you get in the wintertime, and they pay the MRDT. So having more product available for snowbirds is just going to send our MRDT funds down and also reflect poorly on us in terms of the resort municipality initiatives. And this has been an issue that certainly the mayor and I discussed at UBCM with the minister, and she's very, very aware of it, that the evaluation of the resort municipality program only on MRDT funds is not a true reflection of tourism development. DOJ has been very successful with the snowbird program, but we don't get the credit in terms of the MRDT program. So, yeah, that's a real challenge for this particular community.
Thank you for bringing that up, Barry. I did forget to mention that. That is a big difference. They don't pay MRDT, and that's been part of the success, but it's also been a big challenge for us. So what we also plan to do, we've hired a marketing contractor with a very extensive South Okanagan background, who has a deep background in sports. And so we'll be looking to build the incentive markets and the sport market in the wintertime to balance that out. But it's really up to the hotels to decide how they manage their revenue and their inventory.
So we get it. And when we were at UBCM, and at the resort municipality thing, it seems that Asouis has this one particular issue, and the rest of the other 13 resort municipalities do not have it to the same extent that we do. And some of them don't have it at all. So that's a big thing, and we did point it out to Minister Bond, for sure. Counselor King was next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on Counselor Youngberg's comment about economic development and your alliance with Community Futures, and then you mentioned about possibly applying for big funding through some fund. Would that be DO or in a partnership with Community Futures do you see?
It depends on the committee and what they see as a project they really want to dive into. I've got a few ideas, but really, I think the committee needs to sort of hone in and say what they think is the most important, because some of those, some projects would absolutely require a partnership, and some will not.
Oh, I appreciate it, because I did read the whole document. I'm very excited about that document, actually.
Oh, good.
I like the direction you just mentioned.
Great.
Counselor Wilt?
Thank you, Mayor McCordell. Thanks a lot, Kelly. You know, I've been a proponent of encouraging Destination Asouis to come here more often, so this is great. Thank you very much. If I could just go back to that MRDT thing with the snowbirds, being somewhat involved in that aspect in my working life, I just wonder, I see a, well, I'm not going to say a willingness to pay the 2%, but I never, ever hear any opposition to paying it. As a matter of fact, I've heard several comments over the years that it's quite reasonable when you compare it to other provinces across Canada and that kind of thing. We have a process that you're probably aware of, where we can go through SOGA and then eventually the UBM. Maybe this would be an opportunity to look at charging that 2% on the snowbird aspect of it. I think I kind of know why it's different, but you know, sometimes changes like that can be brought forward by following that process, and, you know, there'll probably be a willingness on this council, certainly from my aspect, to perhaps take that to SOGA and go through that process. I don't know what the legislation is, I don't know how stubborn they would be to change it, but certainly with the people that are here that are snowbirds, they don't want to pay it, but there may not be any resistance to paying it if it wasn't effective.
I think that that's a much bigger nut than we think. It means the provincial government would have to agree to an additional tax. That's probably not going to happen, especially right now. The way around that, though, is we can do a DMF. So it's a voluntary program that all properties can take part in, and they can agree to pay a certain amount of money towards Destination Asouis with snowbird reservations that just are literally tacked onto that, just handled exactly the same way. It's just that the money gets funneled directly to Destination Asouis as opposed to the province, because I just don't think the province has an appetite for it. I sat on the provincial board as we got the 2% in place, and it was a struggle on a number of different levels. And then getting that 2% of the 8% mandatory hotel tax back into the hands of the marketing engine of the province was also fairly challenging, so. But we could certainly exercise the DMF opportunity.
Yeah, my point was, you know, when you look at it from the, being a snowbird, I certainly have never been exposed to any resistance to paying that 2% under any circumstances by anybody, really. It's never come up where I'm not going to stay at your place because I can go to Oliver, and they don't have it. There's a total willingness to pay it, and, you know, maybe if we could apply it to that, we may not have to change the act. Maybe there's some way of, and that was my only point.
Yeah.
You know? And I would be willing to work with you on that if it, you know, if you felt positive about it.
Well, I think where I'd start was with the hotel association, having that conversation with them, taking it from there. Are you an active member of the hotel association?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Lisa?
Somewhat, yeah.
Okay. It seems to me that the study that was done by the, on behalf of the 14 municipalities did look, the resort municipalities did look at that, am I correct? Mr. Remanko, that was one of the options that they looked at?
Yeah, they looked at, one of the major recommendations was the implementation of a resort tax. And I guess, you know, I personally don't feel a resort tax will work in this town. The, but the, what we would have to do in terms of the program is get, because a DMF, a destination marketing fee, does not show up either in terms of our because a DMF, a destination marketing fee, does not show up either in terms of RMI. We'd have to get our program legislation changed to include recognition of MRDT. Sorry for throwing all these acumen's around for people watching, but the MRDT and the DMF would both formally have to be recognized within the resort municipality program.
Okay. So Counselor Campbell was next?
Yes, I think as far as going to SOGA legislation, it becomes a challenge. And as Mayor McCordough pointed out earlier, this is most likely more of an Osceus problem than any other of the resort municipalities because of the climate driving monthly stays with the snowbirds. The destination marketing fee can be a challenge, too, and I don't think it's a challenge. I agree with Counselor Rhodes as far as collecting it. Obviously, Inca Beach Resort or Spirit Ridge isn't a tax, it's a fee. And I could say that there's been no resistance over the many years we've been doing it. I guess the challenge becomes, because it's a fee and it's a fee driven through the resorts or hotels themselves, there would almost have to be individual agreements with each one of those properties to give a percentage of that or all of that directly to Destination Osceus, because it's not going to funnel through the provincial government. So not to say none of this is worth looking at, but I think those are the realities that could be challenging. And when we look at the challenge of not getting the full buy-in to go to a 3%, I think it could be a challenging, it could be a challenging task to try to get an agreement to collect the DMF and turn that over to Destination Osceus as well.
Yeah, I have ran a DMF before, and it was challenging. And it puts the organization in an awkward position to start policing our stakeholders. It's not something that's fun to do.
It's a confusing issue, that's for sure. Did Counselor Youngberg?
Do we have a Hotel Motel Association Act of in Osceus?
Yes, we do.
And how many members are there? Do you know?
I've been to one meeting so far, and as I mentioned earlier, I'll be going to the second one. They don't have too many meetings, but I do believe there's about 20 members.
Mm-hmm. And is that South Okanagan as in Oliver Osceus or just Osceus?
Just Osceus.
Okay. Just wondering what strength they would have as far as the provincial legislation is concerned.
They have strength through the VC Hospitality or Hotel Association, which I also have been a part of, that does carry a really big stick with the province. And we've got Inca Jared here, who is, you know, a charge of that, and also would be 1,000% supportive of what we're doing, which is helpful when we've got, I know for a fact, one of our bigger properties and now a second one, willing, and I do know that the Walnut Beach is willing. And so my job, I think, is to really spend a little bit more time talking to some of our smaller properties that may need to be helped in terms of understanding what is in it for them. Why should they do this? And that's my goal over the fall.
And keeping that organization stronger.
Yeah.
And I think that we would certainly agree that the Hotel Motel Association needs to be a little bit more involved and be on slide, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have one more, one more thing that I'd like to see DO be a little more engaged in, and it does involve the Hotel Motel Association. And I think one of our biggest challenges in tourism now, which is going to continue to be a challenge moving forward, is our staff housing concern. So, and that's, I mean, that runs from probably retail to food and beverage to hotels. But every year seems to be more and more challenging, and as revenues are going up, as you can see by the MRDT numbers here, there's a requirement for more staff. And I don't think there's an issue attracting workers to the area. I think DO does a great job marketing the area for all sorts of reasons, for employment, I think could be successful. But the challenge is, where do these people lay their heads in at night? So that's something I'd like to see, is just, I guess, more pressure for lobbying from the Hotel Motel Association to look toward a solution there.
That sounds like something that could end up being one of our projects.
Hmm, that would be a good one. Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate all the work that you've done, and we know that, please know that we're very supportive of getting on board with these things, and we're certainly very much involved with the resort municipality, so that gives us a different slant on things. So thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We look forward to seeing you again soon.
You will.
Yeah, good. Okay. So that will be, that presentation was received for information, and now we're moving on to business, special event permit policy. And that would be Sarah Dynison, Program Director Supervisor.
You know, I don't want to sit here.
Just make sure your mic is on.
So, go ahead, Sarah, please.
Okay. Is that good? So the Community Services Department processes, on average, 30 special event permit applications per year. Recently, we have received two special event applications for weddings that require the use of the entire space at Gyro Park. The most recent application would require the space over the span of three days. These are large events that are reoccurring, reoccurring event requests that require prime park space for multiple days during prime park season. Therefore, administration is seeking council direction on the handling of these events. The Town of Osceus has always allowed individuals and groups to use park space without charge, providing they abide by set bylaws and fill out a special event application form. Fees may be applied for equipment needed, such as bleachers, tables, and/or chairs. While many of the groups who submit a special event application and using entire park space are doing so for public events, for example, cherry fiesta or cactus jalopies, other events such as weddings are private events, and therefore, the park space is no longer available to the general public. In addition, large events, public or private, tend to use equipment that has the potential to damage the park area. Tents, for example, require staking and could damage irrigation lines or the grass itself. Most communities have a fee for the use of their park space, as well as the damage deposit required. Rental of the parks assist the community in its economic development goals. A summary of the fees that the Town of Oliver, City of Penticton, and the City of Kelowna use are attached to this report. To follow best practices and be in line with the surrounding communities, it is recommended that the town have a clear policy direction on private use of park facilities and any related fees. So your option, number one, administration is seeking policy formation direction, which includes continuing to provide a free service, direct the administration to develop a fee slash rental policy for one day and/or multiple day use, or provide clear policy direction that parks are not available for these types of prime time rentals. And information under direction requested, the administration is seeking direction relating to bringing a policy on private rental of parks and related fees to council for approval.
Thank you very much. And I see that you've got the, you've got a park use fee comparison there. It seems to me that in September, Director Davis came and talked to us about rental of, and a fee charged with the bleachers up at Desert Park. And there was a fee, that was, I think, on September the 6th, that we looked at that. So what I'm wondering is, is this just because it's a three-day event? Or is, if it was only a one-day event, would that make a difference on to what, how we approach it?
I think the driving force was the fact that it's a three-day event. But in reality, we are getting more and more larger events coming in and more and more weddings. Most of the weddings are, you know, a couple hours. They don't even really require a special event permit. They require just a park use permit because they're under 25 people. But we are getting more and more larger events and more complicated events. And I think we need to be prepared for more and more and more as they come along.
Yeah. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Sarah, thanks a lot for bringing this forward. I always like to see staff members that bring these things to us and that kind of thing, so, yeah, thanks a lot. So I have some difficulty with a multi-day, I think I have some difficulty with a full-day event. If I read this correctly, we're looking at a fee for like a multi-day thing that would give exclusive use to the park? Is that?
Either for one-day use, multi-day use, or just keep things as is.
Yeah. Our main park, I just want to make sure that I'm going down the right path here.
Maybe I can speak to an example. Please do. Last summer, we basically gave Gyro Beach to a wedding for three days. You know, they had a major private function there. We had no fee for service in place. Their request came to us, so we, you know, we had nothing in place to charge them. So they came in, you know, they came in under the kind of a guise of, well, we're going to have a wedding. It's going to be a one-day, you know, a Saturday. Well, they started setup on Friday. And then they had the day, all day Saturday, all the setup was there, tents. And then the third day was at least a half a day to take down. So the Gyro Beach area was basically consumed for a private function at no charge. And I think what's happened is that the word has got out, what a beautiful experience. We had, we had this great wedding on the beach in Osceus, and we didn't pay anything. So it may be moved through the, through the family members and through the community. And so now we're faced with another request like that, and that's where we took a step back and said, just a minute here. This is a private, this is a public facility. We need some direction from council relating to, does council want to promote this type of activity? And if they do, under what fees and charges should occur? So that's kind of the scenario in front.
So can I ask, I don't remember the wedding down at Gyro for three days, but I don't know whether it was here or not, but would other people have been allowed to go down and use the Gyro Beach Cafe, the washrooms, the beaches?
They would have to use that, but the bottom line is the main park area and kind of the brown shell was totally consumed by tents.
Anytime there's a wedding or a special event that is put in, I always make it clear to the applicant that they don't have exclusive use. If they decide to have their ceremony, anybody can walk through their ceremony on the beach. That's just part of having a function at a public park. But like Mr. Remanco said, when you are occupying a whole green space, people are not going to run through it.
They also used our washrooms as well, which created some issues.
And I believe that event was slated at 600 people. This one slated, yeah. This one slated at about 250 to 300.
Okay. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can see support for some type of fee, but I think you've got to bring a lot of more examples together. You're using parks, but you're really talking gyro, which we do have other parks. So I don't know what impact that would have on other parks when you come up with your charge fee, whether you wrote Gyro Park down to, say, the band shell one area, or there's a beach that's used very much with volleyball, or the whole complex as one, defining that in a map, breaking down the areas to break down costs. So I can see this moving forward, but I'd like to see more information.
And I think this does lend itself to having, taking another look at our special event permit as well, and break, and breaking that down and having those maps and those.
Because don't you already charge for the park up at Desert Park for baseball and softball?
At Desert Park, we do, yes.
So there is some fee structure.
There is a fee structure for Desert Park.
For that particular park, but you're just using the term park in general terms.
That's correct.
So you're already charging a fee for parks?
For parks, yes, yeah, no.
Just to clarify the way.
Counselor Rhodes?
So thanks for that clarity. I was a little confused. I thought maybe it was like an exclusive use.
Well, it's exclusive to the.
Yeah. Yeah, I have some difficulty with that, with public areas being tied up for those. I don't have any problem with having weddings down there as long as there's an hourly timeframe with a fee attached to it. I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, on Friday nights, we're having the music in the park thing, and this example that you brought up must have interrupted that in some way, I mean.
No, this.
Or it has the potential to do that.
It has the potential, but these weddings are, have been in September when music in the park and the other events are done for the season. I wouldn't, I would strongly suggest to an applicant, if they wanted something like this in the middle of summer, that it would not be the best idea in the world.
Yeah.
I know you're asking for input on it, so my input would be, I don't like the full day or multi-day part of it. Certainly, a specific hourly timeframe in the Saturday afternoon would work with a fee attached to it and that kind of thing for me. But, yeah, I just have a problem with taking over such a large space for a period of time like that.
And I think if we're going, whatever we do, there has to be a fee charged to it. You can't just give it to people for free. Otherwise, we'll have weddings there every day, you know, if somebody thought that was going to happen. Counselor Youngberg?
Thanks, Sarah. Yes, yes, yes. Is there any way that you can designate areas that they would use instead of using the whole entire park? The weddings that I've witnessed have been down towards the bridge is where they put their tents up, which I'm assuming is the watermark area.
Yes, yeah.
And so if that area was designated to keep them away from the brown shell and our public washrooms with a fee structure attached, is that possible?
Yeah, we could. They're wanting to do the reception there as well, which is why it is such a large area. And so they want to set up for their wedding and their reception there as well.
On the?
At Gyro.
Right, oh, I see, right in the band shell area.
Right in the whole grass area. When they sent in their sketch of the layout, they want to use the whole grass area.
So sort of following the lobster on the beach indication, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, right, okay.
So did, Sarah, when this happened, did they have to bring in porta potties for 600 people? Or did they just use our washroom?
I was on maternity leave at that time, so I'm not sure what happened.
That's all. So anybody else who has a special event down there is required to bring in porta potties? So I really think we need to look at this very carefully and see what other communities are doing and research this before we allow something like this again. Counselor Campbell?
I just want to differentiate. When Counselor Rhodes was talking about having concerns with multi-day events or full-day events or things like that, I think that's fine when we're talking about bringing in events that are invited, that the whole community can attend, stuff like the cactus jalopies and things like that. So I just want to make sure that we're differentiating that from a private event by invitation as opposed to one open to the public.
Absolutely. Counselor King?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a little hard to compare to Penticton and Kelowna also, where they have a multi-parks to rent, compared to sort of have one unique park. So I don't know if you can, how you'll work with that.
Well, when I looked at Town of Oliver, they have basically just an hourly rate and a daily rate, and their daily rate's based on 10 hours. And then they divide it further for commercial, a nonprofit, and a non-resident as well, so that if people are coming in from out of town and wanting to do a wedding, per se, or an event, that they are charged a different rate than somebody who lives in the city or in the town.
So are you having to give an answer to this person like right now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the problem. I think we need to look at this a little bit more carefully with all of the issues that have been brought up. And my guess would be, say no at this point, because we need to deal with this first.
Can I just ask what the dates were, Ginnage, requesting?
Um, September.
Well, isn't this one in June? Because it's.
Yes, sorry, yes, this one is in June. That's right. The other one was in September.
It's the weekend before, weekend after cactus jalopies.
Yes, yeah.
I thought there was usually tons of things on in June every weekend.
There hasn't been. There is, but not down at Gyro.
Oh.
You know their date for September?
I've got your date for September.
I just want to see where this goes, because when you talk multiple days about setting up, I mean, for a big tent, you need one day to set up, and then the event's the next day. And if it's in the evening, you're kind of tied up there all day. So anybody having what you'd call a one-day event is actually a two-day event.
Yes. But I think, I think that's why, I think it was Counselor Campbell or Counselor Rhodes had mentioned the difference between a private event and a public event, that you're inviting people to come and enjoy with you as opposed to a private event where really you don't want anybody other than your invited guests there.
Sure. Counselor Rhodes?
Just as a suggestion, our park at the end of Cottonwood Drive could possibly be available. I know there's no washroom there, but I mean, it's a fairly nice park and way underused and fenced off and, you know, a fair amount of parking down there, you know, if you use the Cottonwood Drive area. I mean, there's a fair amount of parking down there. down there. You know, maybe that's a good alternative or at least something to offer. I just have a problem with it being on our, on our main public beach.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem for temporary ones, short-term, you know, a few hours and that kind of thing, but full-day and multi-day events, I, I just don't feel real comfortable with that at all.
So Sarah, do you have enough information there that you, that you can go back? Or Mr. Minko, what do you suggest? Do you look like you'd...
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is that there is, there's no, in terms of council supportive of a policy, the policy brought forward would be one that does not allow for multi-day events of private, private multi-day events occupying our, our public spaces. And that we would bring back a, a policy in, in that nature with a fee structure. And so in, in the case of the, having very large weddings at, for example, Gyro, our indication right now is that we would tell people that that facility is not available for that type of function.
The way you said that, that really would impact the lobster on the beach.
No, no, no. You know, you have to distinguish between a private function and...
That is private.
Well, it's not for...
Selling tickets. Well, a launch is declining the policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, we're not, you know, we're not attempting to exclude the, the fundraising efforts of local groups. This is really in essence, this is for the weddings that we've seen and we've had another request and, yeah.
I, I can just see it starting to take off. And I have been seeing more and more requests for weddings in, in the years that I've done the special event applications. It has been an increase for sure.
Well, thank you. This has been a, a good discussion about all the issues that, that we've had to, to bring up, so we will, we will leave it with you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one comment? Following something like the City of Penticton, I think is, is a great outline. It's very clear and concise and, and indicates a clear message to everybody what they are responsible to do.
Yes.
Because even in public functions, of course, that public's invited to, they still use the washrooms, there's damage, there's band shell cleanup, there's all sorts of things that happen, which maybe we should be looking at those.
I, I was just going to say, I'd like to take this opportunity as well to really go through our special event application and clean it up and make it very clear on expectations and what we will be accepting and not accepting.
Good for you. Good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
Just one other thing, Sarah. The policy would be applied to all parks, is that, are we going to separate just now?
The policy is applied right now to all parks, including Desert Park. So even if there's an event up there, like a slow pitch tournament or soccer tournament or anything, they still have to fill out a special event application form. There's just fees attached because that used to be the home base of the Recreation Department.
I think that would be good to include all parks in it.
Okay, so again, the, the policy information will be very broad and, and for example, Desert Park, that may be a very, you know, we, we could take the policy and identify where, where these, where these activities can occur, that in fact will really still create the opportunity, but maybe not the ambiance of the lake.
Yeah.
But if a person wants to hold a 600, you know, person wedding in the center field of Desert Park, maybe that's something we should consider and, and bring that option available to them so that, but again, there'd be a fee associated with it.
The 500, the application that was going to be presented was for a 500-person birthday party. And that's sort of where I thought, you know, it shouldn't, it shouldn't just be geared at weddings, it should just sort of follow the other event outlines as well because that could very easily happen again this year.
Private, private events.
Yeah, and they wanted it at Desert Park in the inside.
Yeah, so, so for now, we're just looking for a, a direction whether or not council sees the value out of the, of the policy. Then we'll have to take a look at breaking down everything, all our, all our parks and recognizing what the opportunities are, economic development, public space, and, and try and build a policy and also sending the message, I think, very clearly to our current users that these are the rules and, and, you know, because it's, it's becoming more and more complex and that's why they need for some direction.
Having done special event forms for many years with, with Community Services down at Gyro for Festival Society, I know that things have been changed slightly over the years and it's a little bit more stricter now and that's good. It needs to be. Yeah, perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That went a little longer than we thought, but Kelly, that would have been interesting for you to hear that too. Good. Yeah, okay, thank you. So we need to move the meeting, be adjourned. Thank you. Campbell, Rhodes, all in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. So we need, have we...